Okay, hello. Good evening, everyone. My name is Bradley Gottschall and I am the Lower Paxton Township Manager. And in typical fashion, I'm going to give a brief summary of this evening's agenda, particularly for the benefit of those who may be watching at home on television. So this evening is a workshop session of the board. They have a number of items on the agenda which do include a presentation on proposed traffic safety improvements to Oak Park Road. The first presentation of ordinance 23-05, which pertains to amending Chapter 165, which is our solid waste ordinance. Following that, the board will also hear a presentation, the first presentation, on ordinance 23-06, which establishes the uniform procedures for the installation of new streetlights. And then finally, the board will hear a presentation on the final proposed 2024 municipal budget. With all that said, members of the board are seated and prepared to conduct business. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Gottschall. I call this meeting of the Lower Paxton Board of Supervisors to order. I'd like to ask everyone to please rise and Supervisor Zumas will lead us in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. The Board of Supervisors did meet an executive session prior to this meeting and I don't believe we have anything for afterward. Now is the time for public comment. Public comment is for items not on the agenda this evening. If you're here and you would like to speak to an item on the agenda, we will have public comment on that item at that time. So would anybody like to address the board on an item not on the agenda tonight? Yes, please come to the podium and give us your name and address.
Hi, my name is Linda Kovage and I live at 1811 Brookdale Road, just up the street. I have a question. I found out on Election Day about a surveillance system going in on Linglestown Road. We say it's for congestion, but the AI system, if you look into it more, it's actually a surveillance system. Down the road, you can cite citations for going over the speed limit, distract eating a cheeseburger, being on your phone. And I was just wondering what caused that system to be put on Linglestown Road? Because it's not like a high crime area.
It has nothing to do with crime or surveillance. It has to do with traffic flow.
That's what you tell us, but when you...
Because that's what it has to deal with, traffic flow.
When you research AI traffic systems, they are capable, much more capable of traffic congestion. Down the road, that can be used for additional things.
Yeah, can I ask, are these, are these cameras?
No, I mean certainly AI traffic systems have a wide variety of, and are from a wide variety of manufacturers. You know, this particular system that is going in does not allow the capability by the township or any other law enforcement agent to surveil the system for any number of traffic citation reasonings. So it is merely to monitor the flow of traffic and weather.
Do they, does it use actual cameras or is it sensing? I didn't, I, I get the feeling it was more other kinds of ways to measure, but not actual video or actual...
Correct. This system actually, there's going to be a number of different procedures through which that would occur. For example, some of the intersections in Susquehanna Township, well, and frankly, in Lower Paxton are newer than others and some have the capability of merely utilizing the existing loop system that is already in the street. On some intersections, there will be cameras applied, but cameras won't be applied to the entire corridor. It'll be a mix of, of, of different systems.
But the cameras that are there are not going to be like somebody speeding, going through a red light, they're not, they're not going to be capable.
All you do is add a chip or add a little bit more to it and that, and you have that system. AI is a slippery slope. You start here and then you keep adding and then you keep spreading. Well, it's working on Linglestown Road and now we're going to spread this to this road and this road. And before you know it, we're going to be like in China on the social credit system where you're monitoring everything we do. It's a slippery slope. As soon as you start that, it'll just keep spreading. I mean, yes.
That is not the point. The point is that the Linglestown Road corridor from the river, all the way out past Linglestown and the high school and particularly to the community of Linglestown is highly congested. And this is a system that was developed by researchers at Carnegie Mellon University. And the point of it is to be able to take into consideration traffic flow, weather conditions, et cetera, in order for the signals to maximize the flow of traffic along the road and to ease congestion. That is the point. And personally, I think it's a wonderful thing. We got a $1.1 million state grant in order to put it in and hopefully it works well and hopefully we do adapt it to other roads.
Excuse me, but where, the funding, who is paying the funding?
I just said, we got a $1.1 million state grant to pay for it.
Okay, okay, so it's coming from PennDOT?
Correct.
Okay, so then it'd be interesting to see where that money came from to PennDOT? Because you're getting a lot of things that are being sponsored throughout the United States right now from like from China to, I mean, getting all kinds of different funding coming in right now to the United States.
It's Pennsylvania taxpayer dollars. There was specific legislation that went through the Pennsylvania General Assembly in order to authorize the expenditure of tax dollars for this purpose. You're trying to make it into something it is not. It has nothing to do with China or surveillance. It has to do with traffic flow.
There's a movie out, all of you should watch it. It's called Police State. It just came out, it's a documentary. And it explains, this is a slippery slope we are on. And it gives you the 10 steps. We're about seven right now. And everything AI is leading to this. And it'd be a good movie for everyone to watch.
And let me just say, I understand you're looking ahead and A, the word...
AI is very scary.
Yes, AI is very, it's a future that we haven't all grasped. So I think that kind of gets people, yes. But just a couple of things to start off with, just, you're talking about, you tell us this now and this, as far, just so you know this, nobody up here is thinking about any of that. We just want traffic to move and we want to use the best technology to do it. Two, if a future board, because it wouldn't be this one, wanted to go down the road, that, that would have to be votes. That would be a, a public development that you and everybody else would come here and say, no, we don't want that. So that's, A, it's not, nothing we considered. We just want the traffic to move. And B, that would be something that would be very public and I don't think it would go over too well. And just quickly, so you know our, where our heads are, there was a development that was going in, I guess Colonial near McIntosh. I forget exactly where it was. And I think the police department or somebody had some money to put in a camera, a traffic camera on Colonial Road, I think, it was one time and...
Into the development?
Yeah, into the development. And our Public Safety Director didn't think anything of it, you know, safety? And we, we hadn't known about it and we said, no, no, no cameras. So it's, we've established that, that's something, if that were to happen, that would be a very public step that we're not even thinking about. And I know what you say, slippery slopes and everything. We know that's part of it. I'm not going to forsake the ability for our residents in the northern part to be able to manage increasing traffic. I'm not going to avoid it just because of what could happen down the road. But just so you know, we're aware of that. It's not our intention and that would be something that would be open and public and nothing that I think the residents would be too excited about to, to do.
I hope so, because I do see, I mean, the trend right now nationally is, especially in the cities right now, is monitoring everybody.
Cities have all kinds of red traffic lights and you go through, we don't, the state won't even approve them for anywhere outside of Philadelphia, I believe. So there, there's lots to be concerned about, but lots, lots of safeguards in place. And this township, we're, we're not eager to go, to go down there. And all we want right now is just to keep the traffic moving and that's...
I hope it stays to that level, but I'm not confident.
Keep, keep an eye on us.
Okay, thank you.
I know even when this, when this came out, that never even crossed my mind about having those cameras, you know, getting people's license plates and...
That's not the point.
You know, yeah, that never even, yeah, it was for congestion, yeah.
The point is, we have a serious traffic congestion problem. And the state government, working through the county in an intermunicipal agreement with Susquehanna Township, is going to take steps to help ease traffic flow. And we've had residents who have complained loudly over the years about the traffic problem. And our townships have joined together to do something about it. So would anybody else like to address the board on an item not on the agenda? Yes, ma'am, please come to the podium. And if you would be so kind as to give us your name and address.
My name is Judith Eggerset. I live on Rosewood Drive, off of Locat's Lane. I had to call the township building today to ask who we were getting, who was picking up our trash and how can I put it on hold? Because I won't be here for a while. And I was told I couldn't do that. Doesn't matter, as long as my house is there. I have to pay for my trash pickup. And I want to ask the township, how did this happen? That it seems like my neighbors didn't know about this either. It was like one thing after another when we did hear that we were getting someone else pick our trash up other than Waste Management. The facts came out very slowly. Most of the time, if you called here and asked, you were told, we don't know that yet. We'll let you know when we know. And then finally, we got messages, recorded messages on our telephone about what to do if your trash can was too big. And we took care of that, but the difference in the two trash cans, it's, it's, it's this much, this much, that's all. I mean, if, you see how short I am? If I bend over to get anything out of the can, I'm going to fall in it.
Please don't do that. The good news is, we are, what's the size again, 35? We are going to make available a smaller 35 gallon can. Now, it's going to take a couple of months till they get ordered and we're able to deliver them, but there will be a smaller can that will be made available if folks wish to have that. Relative to the fact that you can't end your trash service, when the bid went out...
It's not ending it, it's just postponing it as I won't be in my house for a while.
Did we have that before?
We had it before, yes indeed, we had it before. However, and, and with the bid documents, we requested it this time, nobody would do that.
Nobody would do what?
None, none of the trash companies that bid would agree to a provision that would allow you to suspend service for any period of time.
The same...
We had Waste Management, we could do that.
The contract was up and we had to ask, and we had to put it out for bid for a new contract. Same, that's why the cans are so big. We, we, we didn't, we asked, we tried to get Waste Management just to extend their contract, not even do the automated cans. But they, and we've been talking about this for months. I know you, you have a life you're, you're leading. People have explored this and we did lots. We tried to send out as many mailers as we could, but they, there's this, their business of trash collection is really hard right now. And they, in a lot of ways, are in the catbird seat. And there's certain things that they said, we're not going to do it and nobody would do it and we need someone to pick up our trash. And that was one of them. And that's, and the, the two cans, there is a 30 gallon difference, but I know they're both still big. 90% of the people kept the real big cans of the other 10%. There's a smaller portion that even the 65 is too big. And that's why we're going to move to an even smaller one. But you don't know that until you start and do it and hear from people.
But, and that's the thing, hearing from people, talking to people. I, many times I called here. I, I live by myself now. My husband, who was a Korean ex POW for 14 months, is, and he's deceased. He's not here anymore, so. And I live alone, so I have to do everything myself. But as many times as I called the township to get information, the only one I could talk to was the operator, God bless her, but she...
Were you on the special trash utilities line or do you remember? Or were you just called the main number?
I called the main number and asked to speak to someone about the new trash service. I had questions on it. I, I, a couple of times I was connected to someone else who seemed to know a little more, but nothing.
And that's the other part of it. When, none of the, the, everybody who bid for this service was going to charge us, charge you $30 a quarter more just to do the billing. We took it over for $5, so saving $100. But that means we had to get our, we had to build a billing and customer service system out of scratch. So if it did take a little bit of time, it's because this is something we've never done before when it comes to trash. So that, that may have been the case. We're getting there. I called today to schedule bulk pickup and it went pretty well. So they're, they're getting better. The cans will be getting smaller, but I know it's, it's, they're still pretty big.
But can you tell me why this news didn't get out more thoroughly to us?
It did. We, we had, we had, we sent out a letter explaining it way back in May. The Penn Waste sent out a mailer explaining it. There were inserts into sewer bills in two different quarters. There was information that was put in the trash cans when they were delivered. It's been on our website.
Some news articles.
Our news articles, we've done, you know, you probably don't use social media, but we also did that. We did communicate it multiple times, five or six different ways.
People are busy, it doesn't always get through to everybody, but we really did, we really did try.
Well, I guess I must have just slipped through the cracks and my friends also. Because I, we called one another and tried to, to get more information on it and it was like nothing. And now even, when I called the day I found out we're, we'll be paying $108, I think it is, and 50 some cents. But it's going to be included in our Waste Management Bill.
In the sewer bill.
In the sewer, sewer and stormwater.
Because that's what, that's the team that will do it. That's our billing team. So they're just going to add this to their task, is stormwater, sewer, and now trash. It didn't, has nothing to do with how much the price is, the, the companies set that.
I do understand that, but do you understand? I had to call here today and ask.
Well, that's my question.
Who do I talk to about putting my service on hold?
Well, we, well, that, yeah, the service on hold thing was probably not communicated because there are very few people do that. But relative to everything else, like I said, there were multiple mailings and multiple inserts.
So you're saying you never got a mailing from Penn Waste? You never got a mailing from the township? How about when you got your cans, there was a plastic bag that had, they were attached to the can and it had the flyers in it?
No, not to my can, not to my neighbors.
No, that's odd.
I, the only message I got from the township was when I got a voicemail message, recorded message about the trash cans. How if we wanted a smaller can, do this, that, or the other. That's it. No one, no mailers, no, nothing, I didn't. And I've lived here for like 30 some years, so.
I don't, we spent a lot of money on those mailers, so I'd, I'd like to know what happened.
Do you, um, do you read the insert in your sewer bill? Because a lot of people don't.
Oh, I do, I do.
Okay, because it's in all this, it was in the last sewer bill also, with all the information on it?
Yeah, no, I do.
So you're saying there wasn't a, a letter in your sewer bill the last time you got it?
No, no.
Hmm, that's odd.
Not at all, not in my neighbors also. We're both handicapped and one of our neighbors do take our cans back and forth for us now. But no, I, I was glad when we got them, but then they were so big and the next ones were still big and...
You're, you're going to have an option to go to a smaller one here in a couple of months.
Oh, that's wonderful, that's wonderful.
At least we can say that.
Please make sure everybody in the township knows about it. I know a lot of them are, will really be upset.
Okay, well, thank you.
All right, thank you.
Would anybody else like to address the board on an item not on the agenda tonight? Okay, seeing nothing further, we will go to presentation on the proposed traffic safety improvements to Oak Park Road.
Yes, sir, members of the board, thank you very much. Back in September of this year, a local resident, Catherine Schib, along Oak Park Road, had made contact with the township requesting a study along Oak Park Road relative to the, the roads, you know, as, from, from time to time, we have residents calling in asking for traffic safety studies relative to a number of traffic safety concerns. Oak Par Drive, Oak Park Road being one of them, as I'd mentioned back in September, Mrs. Schib did reach out to us. The police department went ahead and began a, a traffic safety study as it, as it does so thoroughly. Usually, these traffic safety studies result in a very clear determination relative to any outstanding safety issues. And a recommendation is quite easily, you know, determined. And usually, these traffic safety studies do not result in any sort of board presentation or action. In this case, however, the department had done the study and made findings relative to the safety of Oak Park Road and noted that a recommendation of converting the road into a one-way road would have potential safety improvement possibilities for the roadway. As you, as the board knows intimately, the Oak Park Trail is along this road as well. And we've seen, especially since the improvements along that trail, you know, walkers, Mrs. Schib had mentioned a number of walkers along the road, you know, taking their dog for a walk or, or a number of other functions. And so the use of the trail has been increasing. And the, the department, as I had mentioned, really did make a recommendation relative to a one-way conversion. And the recommendation, however, is not particularly glaring. You know, it's, it's, it can be converted and it would improve safety, although it does not particularly necessarily outright warrant a conversion. So, you know, as the board may, or may not be aware, these studies occur and usually there's a very formulaic, you know, foundation of, of recommendation. And the department takes a look at factors along the roadway such as, you know, are there any hidden driveways? What is the speed? You know, what is the traffic count? Have there been any, any incidents? And so they look at all these things and each one of these factors, you know, result in, you know, a certain number of points being assigned to the formula. And if, say for example, the, the, the result yields a, I'm just throwing numbers out, but yields a 100-point factor, you know, a recommendation is, is very clear. In this case, like I'd mentioned, it didn't necessarily meet that strict threshold, though the department did mention that a conversion would, would improve safety if, if done appropriately. So all that said, the Public Works Department has taken a look at this and it, it has been recommended by the Greenway Committee that the board take a look at this. And so what is in front of the board this evening is a potential one-way street conversion of Oak Park Road from Lexington Street all the way down to Maple Road. So it's a very easy conversion relative to the, to the flow of that area. It would be desired by the local neighbors of that community. And all in all, in taking a look at this, the Public Works Department has a, a cost estimate of around $9,000, inclusive of staff time. And so it's a very nominal project and we do believe that it would improve safety along that corridor. I mentioned, Mrs. Schib is in the audience. If she has any further comments or, or any questions that may arise from the board, I'm sure she'd be happy to help answer those or provide context. But other than that, that is before the board this evening. If the board does so desire, it would be in order. that is before the board this evening. Um, if the board does so desire, it would be in order. If you have enough information at this point to, to, uh, act on this. If not, you know, we can continue to do some research or help the board in any other way.
You, you did say that the, uh, residents of the area are in favor of this. This wouldn't, uh, in any way inconvenience them. They would be pleased with the conversion? Is that correct?
Uh, yes, sir. And I, I believe, uh, and like I said, Mrs. Schib may be able to provide some more context to this, but I actually believe she had done, um, a petition, if you will.
No.
Or, or at least, um, uh, gone to her neighbors and, and sought more input on this. So yeah, that, it would certainly be something that the neighbors would, would appreciate.
Okay, thank you.
You mentioned the word public safety and anytime it's a public safety issue, that's a new brainer.
Any other board members have comments or questions?
I think nine thousand dollars to improve safety is money well spent.
So am I hearing that the board wishes to take action on this this evening?
I think we have enough information to take care of that.
Well, would you like to make a motion?
I will. I'd like to make a motion that we purp, yeah, propose the traffic safety improvements to Oak Park Road in the amount of nine thousand dollars.
So moved. Is there a second?
Okay.
Moved and seconded. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Okay, there we go.
Do you know, Brad?
You're, you're welcome to come to the podium if you want to make any comments. But please do it from the podium.
Yeah, Mrs. Schab, I just wanted to ask, Brad, do you know when those improvements would start?
Uh, this, uh, excuse me, this wouldn't occur until, uh, next year, uh, spring of next year due to the line painting that needs to occur. But, but it would be a very quick project, so.
Okay, okay, I'm sorry.
That's okay. Uh, Catherine Schib, 131 Oak Park Road. I happen to look right across at the whole entire improvement pro, project. And I'm not going to expand on anything. Thank you very much for the vote. But while we were talking about it, I did want to give big kudos to Jim Seidler who
Great guy.
Works is tail off across the street and the Greenway Committee and Parks and Rec and the supervisors. I mean, it's not a big project, but it could conceivably make a very big difference in recreation here in the township. So, thank you.
Are you still seeing a lot of people? Are they using that trail a lot of people?
Yes, um, actually they are. Um, as it becomes more commonplace, it's actually more built. There's often two or three cars in the parking lot. Uh, we just had, I'll call them a gaggle of boys that live somewhere around McDonald's come like kids used to do. And they rode their bikes up the road, which always makes me nervous because as you may or may not know, there's blind curves on that road. It may only be five hundred feet of roadway, but, um, our entrance way to the park actually enters and egresses on a blind curve. But regardless, kids on bikes, people with dogs we've never seen before. They come from Locust Lane through the cemetery and then up the trail. I, I, it's wonderful. It, it really truly is wonderful. It's been a great addition.
Great. Thanks for the feedback.
Thank you.
Good.
And thank you.
Thank you. Okay, now we move to the always exciting first presentation, uh, of amending the solid waste codified ordinances, uh, Mr. Godschal.
I'll go ahead and take it, Mr. Chairman.
Oh, you're going to take it, Sam? Okay.
Um, thank you. And what you have before you tonight is the first presentation of this ordinance revision. And the ordinance revisions at hand primarily focus on our newly executed contract with Penn Waste, which does take, uh, the township from a can environment, uh, that had allowed smaller cans to be utilized to now our designated, uh, ninety-six, ninety-five gallon cans and the sixty-five gallon option. Uh, there are two pieces of revision that we'll talk about tonight in addition to what you see here, which again, good, this is the first presentation. We can work through these discussion items. The first thing would be this, uh, ordinance revision has gone through various sets of eyes over the last, uh, couple of months, actually. And just this last meeting, the board did approve to add a thirty-five gallon option. Uh, so we'll do a revision for that to include that thirty-five gallon option within the text language of allowable containers for use. The second thing being actually something we've wrestled with for a little bit, uh, and many of you may know, we, we bid a ninety-six gallon option and the delivery was actually a ninety-five gallon option. Well, in the standard of the industry, there's really six major players and they use the ninety-six and ninety-five interchangeably. The ANSI standards that the cans are, uh, essentially certified on, look at ninety-five and ninety-six as the same, just as they do look at sixty-four and sixty-five the same. They're all rated similar for volumetric load provisions and certification. So what we would propose then with the language to make a little bit more clarity in there would be to replace any reference to ninety-five or ninety-six with a ninety-five slash ninety-six. And to replace any reference of sixty-four and sixty-five to be sixty-four slash sixty-five. Some other minor changes were made with classification of institutional establishments, just clarifying language, as well as moving definitions for yard waste to the definition section and clarifying some of the bulk waste provisions, uh, to ensure that everyone knows that you're not to take your bulk waste and put it on your neighbor's property or to dump anywhere within the township. So if there's any questions in relation to the initial revisions, I'd be glad to answer those for the board. But again, this is a first presentation. It would go to a following meeting for further discussion and action.
Okay, and just clarification, you are going to add thirty-five?
That is correct.
Okay.
Wow. No questions or comments? Okay, that being the case, we will hold this over for action at next week's meeting. And also that being the case, we can now move to the first presentation of ordinance twenty-three oh six, this establishing uniform procedures for the installation of new streetlights. Mr. Godschal this time or?
Yes, sir. Yes, I'll take it this time. Uh, so, uh, ordinance twenty-three dash oh six, as mentioned, sir, this is a first presentation as well. From time to time, uh, residents will, uh, residents or property owners will call in, um, requesting the installation of, uh, streetlights, uh, you know, around their home or property. Um, and really up until this point, the township has no set written or even uniform in any way, policy or procedure, uh, through which that installation would occur. You know, our police department, our public works department, um, they independently don't have a system, much like our traffic safety studies, that would determine whether or not, uh, a streetlight would be warranted. It's very difficult. It's, uh, in a lot of ways, it's a, it's quite a subjective, you know, um, quality of life issue, uh, rather than some sort of pressing public safety issue. Although public safety issue can crop up every once in a while. Uh, at any rate, um, noting the lack of uniform policies, uh, this ordinance would set those parameters, um, through the second-class township code. Uh, the board may establish from time to time, uh, procedures through which a streetlight may be installed. And for this purpose, more importantly, uh, financial consideration may be, uh, you know, applied, uh, to the installation. Um, and so this ordinance does lay out, uh, an assessment, um, procedure. Uh, so when a traffic, or I'm sorry, when a streetlight, um, so when somebody requests a streetlight, first that individual must obtain, um, from their neighbors a seventy percent, petition rate of, uh, residents or neighbors within two hundred and fifty feet of that property. And the intent there is if the streetlight is indeed installed, those same, um, individuals or neighbors would be part of the assessment procedure or process. So, um, the, the light is installed and those individuals within that two hundred feet, which, you know, theoretically had been, um, you know, uh, in some way, uh, part of the process would be assessed a certain fee, uh, moving forward for that new light. Um, and so like I'd mentioned, this procedure really does just allow staff some uniform procedures to kind of use in determining whether or not a streetlight would in, be installed. And this process does not, uh, include any other subdivision process, uh, you know, as, as the board is intimately aware. Through, through the development process, street lighting is part of that. Um, so new developments have those as part of that, that process. From time to time, any, any sort of public works project would, which would install a light, that does not include this. This is just, this ordinance is just for, um, privately requested streetlights outside of the typical, um, subdivision and land development process. So, um, with all that said, I, uh, uh, you know, this ordinance is in first presentation mode. It would be in order for the board to take a look at it and determine whether or not it wants to move forward with that. But I'd be happy to help answer any questions relative to the ordinance at this, at this time.
I thought the majority of the lights were owned by P P and L.
So the, all, all of them are, um, owned by P P and L. Um, but, uh, so this, this process, um, you know, like I said, the streetlights are, are already installed, you know, throughout the township through the subdivision process or through P P L's process as an industry. But these are, uh, you know, from time to time, like I mentioned, residents will call in just wa, essentially wanting a streetlight because they think it'd be, you know, safer or they have some other sort of quality of life issue.
You mean like a back alley near their garage or something like that? That's never had a streetlight before?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
They're not A I controlled, are they?
Uh, not that I'm aware of.
Is there anything, Brad, fundamentally different here?
Uh, well, uh, the, I guess the real difference here is, um, applying a new assessment procedure. I, I don't know, and it's hard to say, uh, without being in the minds of the individuals seeking a new light. But I'm not, I, I, I don't seem to think that these individuals would assume that there's any sort of cost in having one installed. So through this procedure, if one is installed, they would
So previously, we, previously, we didn't, we didn't add an assessment. You didn't pay anything.
Correct. Yeah, I mean, up until this, well, yeah, up until this point, the requests have been quite sporadic and, uh, I, I, I don't.
You don't really know. You don't have a real history. Is that what you're?
Right. And I, I hate to put him on the spot, but Mr. Henry, I seem to think that you had mentioned one time you had a light installed at your home and you paid for it completely.
Oh, I paid for, I still pay for it completely. Um, yeah, when I, when I, when I purchased my house thirty-five years ago, uh, I had a streetlight put in on the pole across the street from my driveway. And I, I don't believe P P and L charged for installation, but I still pay a monthly rate on it and I pay for the electricity to use it. So it's totally paid for by me personally.
And that was.
And there was no, there was no, you didn't have to get a permit or anything to do it. It was a private transaction between me and the electric company. And still is, they still keep charging me. If you'd like to relieve me of that, I'd be happy to.
Well, if we say no, then they just go to P P and L.
Correct.
And then P P and L assesses whether or not, or P P and L just puts it in and they pay the electric bill.
So I'm not sure particularly P P L's process, but, but this ordinance does spell out that if it is denied or, or when I say denied, uh, really if the neighbors don't agree and don't sign the petition, right, the individual could still go to P P L, but they would have to be fully responsible for any financial
Yep.
consideration themselves. Yep, so, um, yeah. Uh, but, but at this moment, it's, it's quite difficult for the township to answer a request. In fact, I have one on my desk right now. The gentleman has been waiting for a number of months for me to get back to him. But just, you know, I've, I've sent it out to the police department. I've sent it out to public works and they're saying, well, you know, it doesn't matter to us. There's no public safety issue. And so, you know, how do we answer these requests? Uh, and this would be the way to do it. And, and, and also address the financial
No.
consideration.
Now, Brad, with some of the other developments that have gone in, that have put, I mean, we've had requirements on what kind of lighting and things like that. You know, if P P and L puts it in, I imagine we have no say really on what they put in. Do we have a say in, in this situation? Cause I know some of the neighborhoods, we have, we've had some people come in and say, well, I'm worried about,
Shining in my bedroom.
Shining in my backyard. And we've said, well, yeah, and that's why we've changed some ordinance with, you know, with what lighting requirements and stuff. So does this spell out what kind of lighting, any, anything, you know, moving forward has?
Yeah, the ordinance, I believe, just, just references the township zoning code as well as P P L standards. So I think that, I think that covers it. Um, yeah.
Any further discussion? So, uh, the board would be in agreement, we had moved this forward to the agenda for next week?
Yep.
Okay, so done.
Thank you.
Okay, now we come to the main event. Uh, Mr. Miller will present the township's twenty-twenty-four proposed budget.
Okay, main event. That's a lot of hype. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
A lot of pressure too.
A lot of pressure, yeah.
Well, Mr. Chairman, members of the board supervisors and public in attendance tonight, thank you. Uh, we'll keep this brief. Again, this is really the culmination of the series of a lot of public meetings and presentations surrounding the budget. But this is our kind of final high-level presentation, uh, of the fund budgets that are set for the, um, public advertisement period here in late November, uh, to the tune of when we can then act in December as required by law. So we'll go through this with a presentation about a summary of the funds. We'll talk a little bit about the authority as well. And then some general information on our taxation and how the average citizen puts together their tax payments within the township. So in our township budget package, we have five funds that we budget for. The general fund, which is kind of the catch-all, which we'll come back to, and then four funds that really are there for four specific purposes. The solid waste and recycling collection fund is brand new this year based on us absorbing that function as Supervisor Judd had noted to pass along significant savings to our residents. The state aid fund is required mandated fund for the state where, uh, monies are deposited from the road tax collections. I'm sorry, during the fuel tax collections used for road purposes. Our general improvement and American Rescue Plan Act funds, these are two funds that work kind of, uh, in, uh, accordance with each other where we have the monies that are still remaining, uh, from our ARPA funds received, as well as our general improvement fund holding all the capital improvements in our longer-term capital improvement plan or C I P. And then finally, we have a fire protection, tax, and equipment fund. We have a dedicated millage for supporting our volunteer fire services as well as supporting significant apparatus purchases for them as well. So as you can see in front of you, just a very high-level presentation on the amounts of revenues expenditures within the funds. And, uh, we'll go into each of those in a little bit more detail on the following slides. When it comes to the fiduciary funds, we also have four other funds that we manage, uh, on behalf of other individuals. So these are pension funds, our O P E B, our other post-employment benefit trust fund. And then we also recognize the activity that our tax collector has with county tax collections through a single unified account with the township. So basically a wash of money in, money out. But again, as a high level, twenty-eight point six million in revenue for general fund, twenty-eight point one million in expenditures. With the solid waste fund, this is the amounts of what we charge to collect the entire Penn Waste charge as well as our five-dollar per quarter administrative charge. Seven point eight six million in, seven point seven nine out. State aid is fairly balanced, one point seven five revenue, one point eight expense. And a general improvement and rescue act fund, this is where we have four point oh six million of revenues. We'll get into the details of those here in several slides. And then expenditures of five point nine four million. Again, uh, expenditures well in excess of revenues as we continue to utilize those ARPA funds that we received a couple of years back. And then fire protection, tax, and equipment fund, two point two two million in, two point two nine million out. These budgets will be prevented, uh, presented for final adoption at the Board of Supervisors Business Meeting on December nineteenth. That's a Tuesday meeting at seven P M. Again. Quickly on the authority municipal budget, in two weeks, the authority budget will have, uh, final presentation and adoption of their budgets as well. Uh, the budgets come in. The budgets come in basically two pieces, an operating and a capital. They're segregated because capital activity is so significant with these authority operations based on consent decree projects, as well as coordinating stormwater projects with them as well best we can. Eighteen point four four million in operating revenues for sewer and nineteen point five five million in expenditures. Again, expenditures in excess of revenues as we have some pretty significant bond payments and we're utilizing past sewer rate increases to fund those as we go. But it is still some time before we're going to need to talk about any changes in those rates. On the sewer capital side, seventeen point five two million in revenues. This is significant because there is a proposed new issuance of debt for next year to continue our consent decree projects. We'll briefly touch on that a little later. And expenses of twelve point nine eight million as those projects start to ramp up. On the stormwater side, much less involved with regards to the amounts and activity. Three point five six million in revenues and three point three eight million in expenditures. On the capital side, revenues of only three hundred fifteen thousand, which is tied with interest earnings. The expenditures are coming from previously issued bonds and project costs, six point four nine million. So grand total across the township funds and agency authority budgets, we have an eighty-eight point three three million dollar expenditure budget, pretty sizable. So let's talk about the General Fund Budget in particular. So as the General Fund, as I mentioned, is the catchall of services. This is where our core public service functions are performed. Public safety, public works, that'd be our roads management and infrastructure for lights and traffic signals. Our parks and recreation, a very robust and a wide breadth of areas for open space recreation and dedicated parks programs, especially a very robust summer program. Community and economic development functions, as well as general administrative services. Now, most of these services do not have a direct charge to offset them, so we utilize tax sources to pay them, as every municipality does. Primarily, we fund those through real estate and earned income tax sources. That way, we can provide these services, especially with public safety environment. Obviously, to have someone come to your house to put out a fire, to help you with an emergency or to help you with a police incident. They don't finish that with, here's your bill. Taxation is what fits the bill. The majority of our expenditures are tied with providing these services. And we say we're providing them, that's actually physical people providing those services. So as with any municipal entity, the strength of our expenses are really tied with personnel and our related benefits, to the tune of about seventy-six percent of our overall expenditures. Now, our 2024 budget is balanced using, essentially generating a proposed addition to our financial reserves of about five hundred sixteen thousand. Now, this is unique and something when we meet next year, we won't have the same discussion. But there are a couple of pieces that made this occur for 2024. And we'll get into that when we talk about expenditures in two slides. We will essentially, we started 2023 with about twelve point five six million in reserves. And after 2024 is completed into 2025, we expect to have thirteen point seven two million. This is forty-eight percent of our proposed operating General Fund revenues. Now, that might sound like a lot, but I want to kind of present that with a caveat. Our minimum fund balance policy is twenty-five percent or three months. Forty-eight percent would be less than six months. So essentially, less than half a year is what we have on reserves in case we have concerns, issues to address. That sounds like a lot, but it actually really isn't. If you think about minimum balances, we don't like to keep minimum balances in anything. We like to keep in excess. These reserves help show we have ability to be flexible in the event of a catastrophic event. And that especially looks good when we go to our bond agencies for a rating and consideration. So we're certainly in a good spot and one that gives us some flexibility as we move to future years and talk about increasing contractual costs and inflation. The fund is primarily funded through real estate tax and earned income tax revenue, as I noted, to tune about fifty-nine percent. In the General Fund, we account for two of three pieces of the taxation we charge. That is the General Millage and the Library Millage, one point five five four mils and point oh four one mils. These are unchanged since two thousand and sixteen, and there is no changes in this 2024 budget. Capital investments within these funds are actually pretty limited because most of the activity is tied with our capital improvement plans and the American Rescue Plans Act Funds. In future years, those might become a little bit more active, but at this time, the focus is on those unique monies that have enabled us to do quite a bit over the last couple of years. Hit some highlights here on revenue and expense trends. So the chart on your right, which will be duplicated on this in the next slide. Your black bars are revenues and your blue bars are the expenditures. So first, we're going to focus on the, on the revenue trends. So we have an overall increase in our budget proposed of one point three six million, roughly about five percent versus our twenty-three budget. The big keys here, there's four of them in particular, but the biggest piece of this is our continued growth in earned income taxes. We've seen, you know, significant growth over the last four years in that category as we continue to have strong housing development occupancy and area wage growth in general. So we expect about five hundred and sixty-eight thousand of that one point three six is tied with those taxes. We've also had the benefit of good liquid investment earnings. So about a two hundred and twenty-seven thousand dollar budget increase there. The police have received a significant PCCD traffic grant, which provides a, a number of staffing offsets as well as capital improvements. And they are well, as the board has approved in the, I think it was two months ago. They have taken over to assist the state in managing the entire county's traffic enforcement grant program. So that in essence puts extra revenue and extra expense in our budget. Most of it is a wash, but it does give us increased capacity to get more of those funds than we ever had before, which is tremendous. Plus, it's a great relationship with the county to be able to support all of our neighboring jurisdictions' police departments in making sure they get these funds timely and reconciled. And then lastly, we do have a projected increase in the Pension State Aid. We're hopeful, is indexing based on our 2023 results, which were very positive. So about a hundred fifty-nine thousand dollar increase there. You'll see what the black bars, revenues as far as actual projected in our next year's budget are very consistent. We've really had minimal growth. Now, again, while our population between the last, you know, ten or so years has increased about fifteen percent, the real estate tax value is really only run about one percent a year. So again, we're adding a lot of folks, which do require services, but we're not adding a lot of tax dollars to come along with that. That on the, on the kind of longer horizon creates what we call a structural deficit concern. So it's something we keep an eye on. Reserves are strong and we have outlook to take us forward. Our strategic management plan helped us kind of set the stage from that. And we ultimately have already had, you know, definite success from implementation of pieces of that grant already. And we look forward to doing that in the future as well with some greater strategic focus. As mentioned, the tax rates remained unchanged from 2016 and also for 2024 in the presentation. And, you know, the 2023 budget is a little reduced from the other black bars because we went in with a little more conservative estimate on earned income taxes. They were so significantly increased in late twenty-one into twenty-two. And we were doing a lot of analysis to make sure we weren't dealing with a, a catch-up from the collection agencies. That this wasn't a strong delinquent push, that this was actually, yes, good, solid earned income tax revenue to build trends off of. And it has shown to be just that. So we definitely have that indexed and really is why 2024's budget has a nice jump from 2023. On expenditure, on expenditure side, very little increase from, from last year. And again, it's not what we would really expect to hear, but we'll talk about why that is because there's two pieces to that. Overall, about a three hundred and sixty-six thousand dollar increase in expenditures, only one percent. Really comes down to two buckets of expenses. Personnel, which is really our contractional costs and our discretionary. Both have a very different result to them. Now, on the personnel side, about twenty-one point three five million of our budget, as I mentioned, seventy-six percent. As we're, you know, driven to provide public services to our constituents. Obviously, it takes people to provide those public services. We're actually having a decrease in that total for next year, just under one percent of sixty-eight thousand. This is really based on the board's very innovative action with regards to the inflation mitigation stipends in the previous year. So it kept the wage growth very muted into 2024. So we're reaping that direct benefit. In twenty-five, they'll return to historic trends. So again, we'll have a very different discussion when I take the podium a year from now. But this is also partially offset with some increased OPEB trust funding. The board in the previous month approved us to move forward with opening an OPEB trust that enables us to take tax dollars and invest it a little bit more vigorously to help us offset some of these future retiree benefits. Now, on the discretionary cost side, this is where things are a little bit more grounded in reality. We would expect to see inflation affecting our bottom line, and this is showing it is. From that standpoint, we have about seven percent increase over last year. Four hundred thirty-five thousand dollars increase in the twenty-three budget. And this is tied with a couple of different things. And actually, a, a chunk of them actually relate to revenues, so they have, again, a little bit of a muted impact. The first would be the Traffic Safety Grant Administration. Hundred ninety-three thousand increased expense, as I just showed you in revenue, they're almost an offset. We're, we're, we're now a pass-through for most of this program activity. Next, we have a historical trend increase for our foreign fire relief. This is money from the state that we pass through to the volunteer fire companies, so really a revenue expense wash. And then lastly, we do have some additional capital project transfers that we've identified as smaller projects within the Capital Improvement Plan. Then instead of using Rescue Act funds or ones that don't seem to qualify well for grant discussion, we're transferring some General Fund monies over to support them. And that's to the tune of about a hundred and twenty-eight thousand dollars. Our debt has remained steady. There's no new planned General Fund debt from a bond and loan perspective to be issued next year. It's budgeted at one point nine eight million. Now, in relation to our debt, it's going to decline mildly, mildly over the next two years. It's going to decrease by two hundred thousand dollars starting in 2027. And then we start to hit the cliff where it definitely drops off more substantially, one point oh one million in 2029. Again, this is the timing of discussion for the capacity of that debt. Should the board want to take up future projects with regards to roads, infrastructure, or as we go through a facilities assessment, if there's something in that realm that might be palpable for the board. Something for a much larger scale project where economies of scale would say the bond issue makes more sense to spread that cost out over a twenty-five to thirty-year period. Now, expenditure growth, as you can see, it's pretty steady. And our projections and our budget are almost directly in line. They're very comparable. And again, that's where that one percent differential comes into play. So again, pretty consistent, not typical, as you see moving from twenty-two to twenty-three, a pretty sizable jump. But again, we're kind of then at a unique point in time where this is a little bit of an oddity. Twenty-five will start a more general trend as we expect based on the contract provisions approved. Look at those beautiful cans.
Oh, my God.
It's too big.
What's that?
It's too big.
These are the full-size cans, the ninety-five slash ninety-six gallons. So as I mentioned earlier, we did establish the Solid Waste and Recycling Collection Fund in June of 2023 as essentially the absorption of the billing, collection and customer service functions under the new Penn Waste Contract. We didn't expect to do this. We weren't really looking to do this. But obviously, when the bids came back and showed thirty dollars per customer per quarter, that, that is very substantial. So we sharpened our pencils and determined what it would take to be able to pull this in-house with additional staff, with additional investments into the equipment and process and the conversions to be done. And we determined five dollars a quarter was our determinable amount. So again, that hundred dollars goes into each resident's service pocket every year here forward. Or roughly about one point six seven million dollars a year over our entire population. So not something we could turn our blind eye to. This fund accounts for all of our quarterly billing and collection functions. So Penn Waste bills us on a monthly basis, and then we bill all of our customers on a quarterly basis. That first bill is set to go out within the next couple of days. We did obviously go through a pretty lengthy process to evaluate and address the implementation of those fees, as well as coordinating that with our third parties that do all the billing, the e-billing and the online billing to make sure every piece was correct and reconciled and ready. So it is in that final piece as we speak. The contract rates that are approved are going to be adjusted essentially twice a year. In January, it'll be, it will be modified to reflect any change in the Dolphin County incinerator tipping fee. Again, this is a fee that the incinerator will charge Penn Waste every time it goes there. They, in their contracts, pass that on to the customers. And then the second piece would be July first. In addition to the regular contract changes that will occur, there is a fuel adjuster that's computed. Now, that could increase a bill, could decrease a bill. It all just depends on how the fuel prices have changed over that time.
Sam, can I ask you a question?
Yes.
The incinerator tipping fee, when will we know if they've raised that or not?
Uh, I think we should know soon, and I think they've been on a pretty consistent basis of just doing CPI. Uh, so I would think we should know fairly soon that that should be set for a, a one-on-start. And then that would be essentially applied in the first quarter bill, which would go out in, in, in March.
Okay. Thank you.
And again, usually that tipping fee is a small increase. And when you spread that across the, the population, it's going to have a very minimal impact. But if, if it does come through, we will have to pass it forward. In relation to the budget, it does create a small amount of financial reserve. And, you know, obviously, the idea behind the five dollars was not to make money. The idea behind the five dollars was to set a static amount that would cover us over a five-year contract for contractual increases for employees, as well as a future investment into a more robust customer-centric software solution. Obviously, off the, off the bat, we needed to get it implemented into our current system. And then this will give us the ability over several cycles to understand the uniqueness of how we manage our delinquencies and through that process of collections. And then we can establish what systems work best for us in managing sewer, stormwater and refuse. And then we can focus investment in such software. So certainly, the ninety-six dollars that's created, ninety-six thousand dollars that's created there will be utilized as we progress. But certainly, just want to make sure everyone's well aware of this isn't a profit generator and this money does not transfer to go anywhere else. It stays within this fund for this exact purpose. Next, we have our 2024 State Aid Fund. Again, these are the monies from motor license fund tax collections from the state passed through to us to be used for our road system. Now, these were very negatively impacted in 2021 based on COVID-19 travel restrictions. So obviously, folks were going to the pump less because we weren't really going anywhere. Now, that is fully rebounded by 2023, and, and we hope to see that continue to improve as we progress outward. Twenty-twenty-four, uh, early estimates have shown that, yes, it continues to improve. Looking about three percent increase for twenty-four at one point seven one million. And these funds are mandated to be used on township roads that PennDOT recognizes, which is most of our roads. Two hundred and fifteen miles out of our total, two hundred and eighteen miles qualify under liquid fuels use. So not too many don't, which are mostly smaller alleys and, and less functioned roadways. Total proposed expenditures are one point eight million, and that reflects a small reduction from the 2023 budget. And we don't have any capital outlays proposed. I say capital outlays as any direct additions of pieces of equipment or trailers. Obviously, we do have capital outlays in, in regards to our infrastructure. One point one nine million of our proposed expenditures are tied with paving projects to be identified. Now, really, again, this only supports about two point two five miles of paving or essentially a ninety-two-year turnover plan. So we do have work coming.
And this, Sam, is that all we do for roads is this? And obviously, the sewer and stormwater work, which involves paving. Do we complement this with other funds or this is, this is it?
At this time, it's really this plus what we can do with the authority. The authority has really made that bottom line robust over the last several years. These projects will start to dwindle as we continue to close out the consent decree. So this is an item that we're doing a lot of assessment on at this time.
Because it is pretty much, I mean, the temporary blip, hoping temporary in trashcans. Roads are usually, you know, what I hear about most. And do other municipalities, you know, complement this with other funds, general funds or?
Yes. The ones that have more aggressive or more evaluated turnover programs, they use taxation dollars within the General Fund or a segregation of the millage transferred to another capital fund of that nature. But really, in the end, tax dollars, either through issuing debt to do projects or a dedicated, you know, annual spend campaign.
Okay. And I know we're in somewhat of a unique position. A lot of townships and municipalities are doing sewer and stormwater. I think we're, we're not maybe in the majority where we have a consent decree. We're basically for the last several decades redoing the entire, replacing the, all the sewer. We're basically, for the last several decades, redoing the entire, replacing all the sewer lines. So constant churning, ripping up of roads and repaving of roads, which produces a new road. So in theory, that, and beyond theory, that actually does count as new roads. But it's always something I thought about, and if someday we need to think about that.
And certainly, it's well placed in timing because we've been doing some very dedicated focus on that plan to look into the future strategically.
Right, great.
And we're not alone. We're amongst a lot of company that struggle with a pretty substantial infrastructure network. And at two hundred-plus miles, we have quite a bit to take care of.
Freeze-thaw cycle.
Our State Aid Fund is balanced by using a slight amount of reserves this year, and which would bring our anticipated total to three hundred sixty-one thousand going into twenty-twenty-five. We normally keep about two hundred fifty to five hundred thousand in that fund. It allows us flexibility with any changes in our equipment, should we have a falter or need to replace earlier than what we thought, and as well as managing additional costs and lease costs with turning over some of those, you know, larger equipments, the dump trucks and the trailers and such. Next, I have a few slides about our General Improvement and ARPA Funds Budget. So really, again, two separate funds, but very well interlaced with each other. Now, as the board knows, we made the designation for our ARPA Funds that when they were released, we identified and tied that use to essentially create the budgetary savings for public safety costs. What that did is it allowed us more flexibility to then put these additional budget savings monies aside. We'll call them ARPA, and then we can use them as we see fit based on how projects come to our consideration. So we have been slowly spending a good number of those funds based on Board of Supervisor authorized projects through our CIP plan. And by keeping this ARPA Fund, we can keep good tracking for management purposes. Now, our projected unspent ARPA Funds to start twenty-twenty-four are four point one two million. Now, that's out of the five point two million we were awarded. One point five five million is proposed to be utilized within the twenty-twenty-four year. That would leave us two point five seven million unspent at twenty-twenty-five. In the General Improvement Fund, this encompasses anything we're going to spend with ARPA monies, as well as dedicated grant seeking. Sometimes we'll also get local contributions or restricted donations. Fee-in-lieu monies for our park system, in case developers don't have parks to dedicate, parkland to dedicate to us. They can pay a fee in lieu of that. And then, as well as any transfers in the general fund, if necessary. This, again, accounts for all of our ARPA spending as well, so we kind of capsulate all of our capital expense in one place.
Sam, you said going into twenty-twenty-five. I thought we had to spend them by the end of twenty-twenty-four.
Well, as I've mentioned, what the board had done, which many municipalities had done as well, is once the ARPA Funds were issued, we proclamated to use those to offset public safety costs incurred because we were allowed to under the exemption for revenue loss provision. What that did is it allowed us to satisfy the federal requirement to quote-unquote "spend it" within that period. And then we could take those monies as budgetary savings, transfer them into a capital reserve fund, and then manage them as we see fit.
Okay.
The total revenues within the General Improvement Fund budget are five point six one million. They break down to the one point five five million from the ARPA Fund and a hundred ninety-three thousand transferred from the general fund for smaller projects. Then we have some bigger keys to work through with regards to the grant programs. We've been very successful with a number of significant grant programs, as of late, especially in transportation. So we'll highlight those in a couple of slides here. But three point eight three million in federal, state, and county grant-supported funds next year within the Capital Project Investment Fund. Now, most all of those are actually awarded funds. We don't have many on this list which are in the applications, you know, waiting standpoint, which is very good. So this is money that is ready for us and ready to move. And then finally, we have about forty thousand in short-term interest earnings from unspent park fee-in-lieu monies. I always like visuals, and this is a pretty telling visual. I mean, there are significant investments still being made within our systems. Three point three four million is proposed for twenty-twenty-four in relation to transportation safety and innovation improvements. One point eight nine million into our parks and recreation improvements, as well as new amenities. And then finally, about seven hundred and six thousand dollars into public safety and community development investments. So if we look back to when ARPA started in twenty-twenty-two, which kind of helped renaissance our whole CIP discussion, we've invested about twelve point one million dollars into these various systems through the end of twenty-twenty-four, and there's still another five point two two million anticipated through our current CIP program, which is two thousand twenty-five to two thousand and twenty-eight. And again, a good majority of those are grant-supported, either very substantially or at least fifty percent. There's a lot of detail in these next couple of slides. I want to kind of give a high level. We've talked about the CIP program, but it's always good to kind of step back and remind ourselves, okay, what's coming up next year? So these are the bulletized projects that are going to be hidden in twenty-twenty-four. Now, some of them carry over from twenty-three. Some of them are just really starting to gear up, so they're going to go into twenty-twenty-five and twenty-six. But we'll highlight those as we go through. So again, overall, our expenditures, five point four, five point nine four million through unspent ARPA, designated parks donations, land sale proceeds, and grants that we have. So I have these broken into our departmental categories and public works and transportation. Quite a lot going on here, quite a lot starting. In pedestrian and traffic safety improvements, we have multiple projects here. One point four million is the expense for this next year. These are federal, state, and county grant-supported projects. We have the Union Deposit Corridor pedestrian safety, Lingelstown Square pedestrian crossing, Route twenty-two and Prince Street, and Route twenty-two, Lincoln and Allentown traffic safety improvement projects. So these have all been vetted by the board and reviewed and discussed. A lot of grant funds to support these projects as well, but most of those will be starting up in this next year. Now, some of them might take some bit of time in twenty-four before engineering, their design, their plan, they're moving forward. But most of those will be moving ahead. Crumbs Mill Road Bridge Replacement Project. Two hundred twenty-five thousand is projected in next year's budget. Again, this is a little tougher one to gauge just because we're just getting started in the process. There's a lot of design and evaluation to be done on such a major improvement to that bridge. And as you're well aware, we've had kind of a roller coaster of funding discussions as well. The board was ready to work with the county on an infrastructure bank loan to the tune of about eight hundred twenty-two thousand. Well, at the eleventh hour, we found out that it was moved on to the state's tip program, which took us from eight twenty-two down to about sixty thousand dollars. So we reached out to the county and graciously bowed out of that program, knowing we could satisfy that through general reserves. So, you know, in the end, I think about a two point four million dollar project, and we'll, you know, cash out at about sixty-four thousand dollars. So a tremendous access of grant funding and support through the county and through state and federal grants. Within traffic signal improvements, we have several projects in there. One point one five million proposed for next year. We have the timing and signaling improvements for Route thirty-nine and Colonial Road. Now, on Colonial Road, it's focusing on Colonial and George and Valley and Devonshire for some corridor improvements there. These are virtually all fully grant-funded, though we have about two hundred fourteen thousand dollars over the entire project duration that will be our net cost. Next project will be their fleet fueling station improvements, budget of four hundred sixty-five thousand for next year. This is to replace our current underground storage tanks for unleaded and diesel fuel. We're going to replace those with above-ground tanks, more safer, less regulations and requirements to work with. And we're also going to be replacing the filling station equipment and the software. This is primarily ARPA-funded. We also will have a small increase to the incremental cost of fuel for our third parties to utilize it. It is still exceptionally well below what they would pay at the pump with the taxation that is at those pumps. Our fuel and diesel, our unleaded fuel and diesel is tax-free, so we can pass that on to our nonprofit organizations. And then finally, we have some minor improvements and assessments of about a hundred and five thousand dollars. We're having an infrastructure assessment study. This ties in with the supervisor's judge comments about looking forward to our infrastructure investment program. It's going to be a very comprehensive assessment on all of our roads, all of our traffic signals, and to better understand how our system is doing. How well the robotics data is showing where our investments need to be made, and start to develop some funding plans to make this a reality, that we are investing on a real turnover basis for these very instrumental assets to our citizens. And then also, we have our robotic scan system software costs, which will pay the final charge on those as we go through that process. And we're removing some pole communication items that are kind of outdated, that are going to save us some rental charges. On the public safety side, just two quick ones here. We have the PCCD grant improvements. And this is through the PCCD grant. The PCCD grant came out, it was late last year, I think, and it was for a two-year period. So it's twenty-three and twenty-four for various acquisition of equipment to increase public safety within the township, as well as give us a little bit of offset for some of our unique positions that we have downstairs with regards to some wages and some overtime. Now, the wages-overtime pieces, since those are in general fund, they're over there. The PCCD that's in a general improvement is focused on, I hate to say one-time events, but those less, more non-routine investments in capital assets. So as you can see on here, some investments into some public safety equipment in this next couple of years, all netted with federal grants absent about two thousand dollars. And then finally, just some other general improvements. Still evaluating the evidence garage and impound lot that's at the public works yard to see if that should be improved or benefited at its current location, or if we could use another ancillary satellite site to have that be a bit more robust and safe environment. And then lastly, we've been implementing new modem replacements in the vehicle. So this is the last of a phase of three-year, five purchases per year of those modem replacements. And it's just updating really to the new 5G technology. Last slide on general improvement, notes a lot of detail, but again, we are investing a lot. Community development, this will be the culmination of work that's been going on here this year. And as we move into the future, now we're going to be a direct CDBG recipient. So we're working with a consultant for development of the Action and Customer Participation Plan, which is a federal requirement as part of the program. Once we get this in place, we can get our formal award, and we can start to address how we're going to plan a future spending of these new direct funds we're going to get. And again, it's only about two hundred twenty-three thousand. We'll have administrative costs to come out of that, so it won't be like we can go pave a mile of road. But we can make some dedicated improvements in areas that would most substantially benefit from those. And then finally, in our Parks and Recreation Group, again, another robust year, another active year coming up. Stray Winds Park, we have playground and trail improvements proposed, two hundred ninety-five thousand dollars. Two hundred fifty thousand of that will come from a CFA grant. That application is currently pending. We're keeping our fingers crossed. In Coons Park, we have walking path upgrade and expansion, tennis court patch and pave improvements, and playground replacement in the works. Four hundred eighty-four thousand is the expected cost for those projects. They are all to be coming from unspent ARPA funds. Cool Park, we're looking at court facilities updates and pretty significant upgrades to the Happy Tales Dog Park. Five hundred twenty-seven thousand is the total proposed for those two projects. We do have some support funding. A hundred twenty-six thousand is applied for with the county through the local share grant. And we do have some restricted grants that we have already received that are going to help that project. The remainder will come from some dedicated park monies from our Wolfers Burger sale, as well as ARPA funds available. George Park has some smaller projects, inline hockey rink renovations, parking lot road connection construction. This is going to connect an existing parking lot with a road that would allow us to remove our right-of-way needs from the local church, as well as a connected walking path within George Park. That's going to connect George with Lamplight. The total of those three projects is only a hundred twenty-seven thousand dollars, and those are going to come from designated park funds. Next would be Conway Track. Again, Conway Track's kind of a newer discussion this past year based on the concerns of Hodges Heights with regards to the environmental issues with that site with making a more robust park improvements in that area. We've been eyeing up the Conway Track, which is an authority-owned property that the township is evaluating for the placement of a permanent park to take the formal place of Hodges Heights. As part of the local share application, we had requested a mount to have a master plan study done, as well as a hundred fifty thousand in seed money to get the project rolling. Obviously, it's going to be quite a bit more than that, but we have to, had to put together a package, and the county local share hopefully is a good recipient of our needs in relation to kickstarting that project. Centennial Acres Park, we have basketball court and culvert replacement, a hundred seventy-eight thousand proposed from designated park funds. And then lastly, in Brightville Park, we have parking lot resurfacing and enhancements. We all know it's got some kind of weird dividers between it. It's going to be reevaluated to what makes sense from a traffic flow and management standpoint, and as well as tennis courts, tennis courts, patch and pave improvements, and a fence replacement at Santana Field. Again, pretty smaller projects, when they all come together, about a hundred and twelve thousand dollars, all from designated park funds. Now, at the end of the day, our General Improvement Fund will be left with about seven hundred eighteen thousand dollars. This is tied with unspent fee-in-lieu monies. So again, these are monies that we get from developers. They're to be used exclusively for new parks and new park amenities. So we have those tied with a couple, sorry, a couple of different plans in relation to actual dedicated new facilities, rather than just replacing existing equipment. So very specific on the use, so we have those to be able to use in the future, hopefully to assist us a bit with the Conway Park improvements. With that, the last fund we'll talk about tonight is the Fire Protection Tax and Equipment Fund. So as mentioned, this is a dedicated millage that is there to help us support our fire protection services within the township. This includes our significant investment into volunteer fire apparatus. The fire tax millage of point six three six five remains the same as it has since two thousand and twenty-two, and there is no increase to that in the twenty-twenty-four budget. Total proposed expenditures are two point two nine million. We have no capital expenditures anticipated for this next year. The primary items for twenty-twenty-four are the continued implementation of the volunteer staff, volunteer staffing stipend program. The board did authorize that program to move forward at the recommendation of the Public Safety Committee. And this was initially started up in this month, and so we'll be receiving some details to pass to the board here in December from the November activities to see how well this is going. But hopefully, this is a great incentivizing program to improve our minimum vehicle responding and overall response manning within the communities. Next, we have our annual allotments we provide to the volunteer fire companies. That's proposed at a hundred and eighty-four thousand four hundred to each of the three volunteer companies. This includes eighty-five hundred dollars, which we've identified as a stipend towards the apparatus insurance allocation. The board did approve the last couple of years to do a direct pay, and based on providing consistent guidelines for how those vehicles should be insured, we've identified eighty-five hundred as the believed amount to give to each of them to offset their cost as commensurate with what those basic standards should provide in cost to them if they do market it appropriately. Two hundred twenty thousand dollars is there for our deputy fire chief and an allocated portion of the public safety director's salary, as well as all related taxes and benefits. This, in addition to this, there is also our state obligation to fund workers' compensation insurance for our volunteer fire groups. So we have that in a budget of sixty-eight thousand five hundred. Two hundred sixty-one thousand a budget is for our public fire hydrants throughout the township. Three hundred five thousand four ten remains our static contribution into the Fire Equipment Reserve Fund. This is where we're essentially investing these annual contributions. So when it comes time to replace our apparatus, we have the funds on hand that we won't need to issue additional debt. There is debt within the fund now that was issued several years ago. Three hundred eleven thousand is that remaining debt service for next year. I believe it goes through twenty-nine or thirty-one, somewhere around that timeframe. And then the expectation is, when we stop paying that debt, we'll increase the capital reserve deposit equal to that and keep the tax rate flat, and that should be enough to take our capital improvement project out fifty to sixty years. So hopefully, we'll not have to talk about debt again. But as we all know, fire is a big topic, so please don't hold me too accountable for that. Overall, our fire budget is proposed to use only sixty-two thousand in operating reserves this next year, which is great with implementing the volunteer stifling program. If that's successful, this will hopefully help us manage fire in a slow, methodical, and very precise basis moving forward. And again, we're going to add about three hundred ninety-five thousand to reserve based on the transfer plus interest earnings, which are doing a very well. And again, we're going to add about 395,000 to reserve based on the transfer plus interest earnings, which are doing very well. We're going to project starting reserves in 2025 at 1.1 million for operating and 2.1 million for capital purposes. Real quick, high level on authority, as I mentioned the previous amounts. They're going to go before the Authority Board here in two Tuesdays for that public board meeting at 7:00 PM in this room. The rates for sewer and stormwater services do remain unchanged in the budget. $158 per quarter for sewer, $26 per quarter for stormwater. And again, stormwater was reduced from $32 back in 2021. The authority was awarded a $1 million state CFA grant, which is going towards the Paxton Creek 3E Sewer Replacement Project. That's recognized in 2024. And as I mentioned, the capital budgets still reflect a very continued significant investment in the improvement of our utility infrastructure tied with the consent decree as well as stormwater projects alongside those sewer projects. It's nice when you have that nice open trench to do them both. But obviously, with only $26 per resident coming with stormwater, we can't always lay that stormwater pipe next to the sewer cost-effectively. 12.98 million is proposed for sewer capital and 6.49 for stormwater capital, all coming from existing bond monies ready to spend. 16.165 million is proposed for an issuance of debt. I believe in this next month, you'll have some folks show up, as they normally do, to present information to the township about the debt. As you're all very well familiar, the township will issue the debt, and through a subsidy agreement, the authority will absorb and manage that debt on our behalf. This way, it's really always worked between us, and it works well. That is really focused on investments in the continued consent decree improvements to Beaver Creek and Paxton Creek. So lastly, as we always talk about tax, let's come back to tax and talk about what that means to our residents with regards to taxation. Well, our total taxation value is 2.2315 mils. So let's make sure we all understand what the mil is. So 2.2315 is the dollar cost per $1,000 value of your home. When I say value, it's your assessed value, not the market value, which can go up and down on every given day. This is the county assessed value, the last time they assessed it, that will continue for the life of you owning that home, absent you demolishing something or adding something. Now, the average assessed value home in the township is 225,200. This comes from census data, and it's about two years behind. But that's our average value of home within the entire township. So the real estate cost for an individual for an average home within the township is $503 a year. And you can see the breakdown of how that tax breaks out between our general service, larger piece, 1.554 mils, or about $350, versus fire protection, .6365, or $143, and our library contribution at a very small $9 a year. Now, within our county, only five municipalities have populations over 20,000. Lower Paxton, Swatara, Susquehanna, and Derry Townships, as well as the city of Harrisburg. We always take the city Harrisburg and put them aside, and we do this analysis because that's a whole other ballgame. Their tax rate is to the tune of about 36 mils, again, versus our two. So it kind of greatly skews the result. So we throw them aside, and when we compare them with our over 20,000 population groups, the average tax millage is 3.1605, so close to a mil higher than what ours is in Lower Paxton. Now, when we look at all taxing municipalities within the county, that average goes up to 4.14843. A lot of digits, but in the end, near double what the township is. So certainly, lower Paxton township taxes continue to be much lower than our counterparts within the county. And hopefully, we can all deem that, yes, we're receiving great services for that value. And one more slide to kind of pull that again a little bit together from a household perspective. When we talk about households, the real estate tax is one of a couple pieces of tax. So we'll look at those in two buckets. What do we pay in real estate property taxes, and what do we pay in income taxes? So again, taking that average value home at 225,200, and the average household income, this assumes two working adults, is $77,583 based on census. So let's talk about then, what does the average household pay in overall taxes? Well, on the left, you'll see three components of real estate tax, school district, county, and township. That individual pays $3,933 a year to the school district for tax, $1,548 a year to the county for tax, and $503 to the township. On the income tax side, the earned income is the largest piece. That is 1.5% that goes to the school district and 0.5% that comes to the township. That in total is $1,552. And then local service tax is that $52 per person that is working that is paid to the township that goes towards emergency service costs. So in all, the average household pays $7,644 in tax a year. Only $994 of that, or 13%, actually comes to the township. So again, further support that, you know, we're providing a great service, we're providing it at low cost, and certainly, it's something the board should be very proud of. Before we wrap up with questions, I just wanted to mention one quick thing. Again, as you're well aware, I do teach on the side. I teach for the state a number of budgeting courses, elected auditor courses. And the state structure and what they promote across the entire state is townships start to work on their budgets in September. Management figures them out in October. The board first sees them at the beginning of November or middle of November, and the public first sees it at the end of November. Certainly exceptionally commendable to the board that we have such a transparent process to be able to work with. Our budgets start from a very public perspective at the beginning of September. Departmental presentation after departmental presentation, full budget presentations in great detail in October. And then this is really that final culmination of that. As I sit before you to give a overall arching benefit of the budget presentation, I'm sure you're saying, Sam, we've talked about this for two months, get over it. In most municipalities, this would be the first you're hearing about it. So this is very commendable to the board. And I certainly, in my standpoint, coming in, you know, only two years ago, coming into a system like this, I'm very proud of what I'm able to work with, with the board for that. And it's very, you know, applaud to you for being so progressive and transparent.
But I want to commend you, Sam, on a great presentation. I mean, you, the couple of years that you've been here, you've just been remarkable.
Well, more than a commendable presentation. The complexity of a township, I mean, an $88 million overall budget between the township and the authority, and this budget represents the culmination of a tremendous amount of work, certainly spearheaded by Mr. Miller, but including our manager and our very capable department heads, all of which very seriously take our mandate to keep costs low and services high, and they in fact did it.
Very much so.
So I think that we owe a debt of gratitude and congratulations to all involved because it certainly was a staff-wide effort.
And along those lines, just because this was a great presentation, I don't think this is up on the website yet?
Not yet. This, I actually just fine-tuned this about 4:55 PM. So it will be pulled into PDF accessible, and it will be up on the website this week.
Wonderful, yeah. There's one of the older, drier kind on there, but this for the average person is really great. And I'll just echo the board members, Sam. It's, you know, we get faced with a lot of issues, as you guys do on every day. And it's, the financial decisions are tough enough as it is. If we had to doubt the numbers we're being given, the projections, if we weren't confident in those, it would make our jobs 10 times harder. So just for that reason, I appreciate the work.
Thank you.
And no tax hike this year. In addition to no tax hike, funding the reserve fund, 48% of annual expenditures. I'd be interested in knowing how many municipalities have that amount of a reserve fund to protect them against future ups and downs. So all of this done within the parameters of the existing tax rate.
Sam, I just had one question. How much debt do we have left from the Friendship Center? I'm sorry, I didn't mean to put you on the spot.
That's all right. I can certainly pull that information together for you. I think that's one of the biggest pieces that does trail off in that, I think it's four years where that really starts to trail off. So there's still a decent amount of that that is left, but I can get you a more concrete answer on that.
Okay, just curious.
We're taking that from the manager's salary, correct? That's sort of a running joke. Whenever we need money, we say we're going to take it from the manager's salary, who at this state, at this point, is probably paying us to work here. Board members, do we have any questions for Sam or any public questions for Sam? Okay, this is a presentation. It will be scheduled for approval, the third meeting in the month of December. And with that, do we have any additional announcements? Our next board meeting will be a business meeting on Tuesday, November 21st at 7:00 PM. Amazingly, just two days after that is Thanksgiving already. So in this room at 7:00 PM on Tuesday, November 21st, is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Is there a second? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Meeting adjourned.